So, is there any discussion?
I'll make it.
We have a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve, a seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye, ahsa, but motion carries. Is there any mail that anybody needs to bring through? Okay. Moving along to our county attorney.
I have nothing immediately discussed right now.
Well, I know we've had a lot of excitement for the past few weeks or the past month, but does there...have any committees met?
No.
Okay. We have no unfinished business. Move on to new business. Jail radio equipment paid for by 911 budget, Terry Bennett.
Good evening. I just put a packet on your guys' seats. I am here due to...at budget time, when I was given my budget, the county sheriff's department was given $2,000 out of the wireless money to use for radios. I had advised to use caution on what it was used for because there's certain criteria. There's actually an IC statute on what it can and cannot be used for. In attached, you see the email to where I questioned the...it was back in August. I intentionally waited until after reelection to bring this up. But in August, I questioned these claims. They were...in attached, you'll see the two claims. They are for fixing jail radios. That does not fit into the criteria of the wireless monies. You'll see the email as well that I had sent it to Mr. Barry Ritter, which is over the statewide 911 board. And he advises negative, that it is not. I was in a face-to-face meeting with him Friday. We discussed this a little bit more in depth. And he advised that no, from what he is seeing, it does not fit. So, I have brought this to...now I'm bringing it to the council's attention. And basically, my recommendation would be to have Dale Strong, since he is the council representative on the 911 advisory board, to get in touch with Mr. Ritter to resolve this issue. I have attached the IC code as well. If you go down to number eight, it's mobile radios by first responders and jail personnel fixing their console was not...does not fit into that criteria. It is very tedious on what you can and cannot use that monies for. So, the total of those will basically need to be reimbursed to the 911 funds. Did I lose ya?
Like we're trying to find this.
Okay.
Item that you're talking about. Is it in this packet?
Everything that I just gave you, there should be...
What did you...you were referencing something from what sheet?
The very last two sheets is the copy of the IC code.
Yeah.
That Mr. Ritter referenced.
Number eight?
On number eight, it says the mobile radio equipment used by first responders other than radio equipment purchased under subdivision, blah, blah, blah. But it...mobile jail personnel jail stuff does not constitute money out of the surcharge money. It is not...it's not a qualifying factor. I'm sorry, I did not get carried away. I'm sorry. I know I made an extra one for a reason. But basically, that just...
Terry, did you have another set? I didn't get a copy of that.
I just gave the last one to him, but you can have one.
Thank you.
Dale, press your side.
Terry, are we talking about a total of $2,000?
No, the one bill was 549, the other one's 299, both of those claims.
About 800 some bucks.
Yeah. And basically, I mean...
But we had 200...$2,000 budgeted for them?
Mm-hmm.
So, it was obviously overset our misunderstanding of what those funds could and could not be used for. So, we need to correct it.
Right. And in order to correct it, basically, it just needs to be reimbursed, is basically it. But like I said, when I had my face-to-face meeting with Mr. Ritter Friday, we talked about it. And I pretty much kind of threw Dale underneath the bus and said, "Well, I'll just have Mr. Strong contact you, he knows Dale anyway." From different meetings, so if you have any questions on it. But basically, that's what needs to happen, is that the sheriff's department needs to reimburse the wireless money on that.
Should you be willing to do that?
Sure. I've read the email traffic from Barry Ritter on this. So... According to him, you're right.
If it would have been purchasing...if it would have been purchasing radios for the road officers, then it could have...you know, they're a first responder. But to fix the jail radios, they are not considered first responders.
Then we'll just have to reimburse the wireless fund, Fund 1222, for this amount, and then we'll be all square.
Okay.
If necessary, I'll talk to Barry about it. I think we ought to be working out the arguments opposite of it.
Yeah. So...
Anything else, Terry?
Nope, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Not on our agenda. We have NextEra here. We'd like to welcome them, Jeremy and Mary. That's some...I think it's good news for the county.
What I hope to hear. Well, good evening. Thank you all for having us, especially not on the agenda. So, I just wanted to cover a couple of quick things. There's been a lot of discussion and rumblings around regarding a potential wind farm in the area. NextEra Energy Resources is currently developing a wind project in the area that spans three counties, Fayette, Rush, and Henry counties. 60% of the projected project is expected to be built within Fayette County. So, I wanted to give you a little bit of background about who's building it, why we're here, and then go into a few more specifics on the actual project itself. So, as Mike mentioned, I am a representative of NextEra Energy Resources. NextEra Energy Resources is the largest producer of renewable generation in the U.S. We have over 10,000 megawatts of wind and over four...excuse me, over 500 megawatts of solar in production currently within the U.S. in 25 states and three Canadian provinces. So, the parent company of NextEra Energy Resources owns the company I work for. And it also owns Florida Power and Light, which is the fourth-largest utility in the country. Combined, the two companies have over 44,000 megawatts of generation in operation. As you can imagine, the utility side within Florida, predominantly natural gas, some nuclear, a little bit of solar. And then, NextEra Energy Resources is a combination of, like I said, 10,000...over 10,000 megawatts of wind, over...excuse me, 4,000 megawatts in natural gas, and then over 3,000 megawatts nuclear generation, as well as the solar that I mentioned. So, again, we operate in a number of states, three Canadian provinces. The biggest distinction, I think, between us and a number of generators, with that over 10,000 megawatts of generation, the next closest competitor to us has roughly half of what we have in operation. All right? So, we've got over 10,000. The next closest competitor has a little over 5,000 in operation. The other distinction that I'd like to point out between the two companies, not the two companies, but us and some other competitors, if you will, is that we are an owner and operator. So, we're not developers that go out there, try to develop something, and then hopefully flip that to another counterparty to buy, to operate, and to own for 30 years. Our model...we're grown up out of FPL, out of the utility. So, we have a very conservative model. So, we develop these projects to own, to operate, and to maintain for 30 years, if not more. Wanted to talk a little bit about this specific project that I've mentioned that's going to span Fayette, Rush, and Henry, and it's called the Whitewater Wind Project. We've actually already spent over $2 million developing this particular project. We've been in the area with meteorological towers since about 2007, 2008 timeframe. And what we've done from that, really, there's a few things that are needed to go forward on a development project, to go forward with the wind project that makes it viable. One is certainly that there needs to be strong and consistent wind. Again, we've been measuring that for a number of years. We're very happy with the wind...excuse me, with the wind resource in the area. Another key piece is just availability and proximity to transmission. So, you know, we want to make sure that the power that we generate can be put on the grid and therefore utilized from, you know, commercial residential customers. So, this area has a very good proximity to a number of impressive transmission lines, which make the project extremely viable as well. Another thing that we obviously need, we obviously need willing support from community, from landowners, from folks like you. And we feel very comfortable with, you know, with what we've seen in this area in the last few years. The other piece, you know, we need a well...we need a well-positioned market. So, what I mean by that is we need somebody to buy the power, right? That's important, right? We've got to generate it, we've got to have somebody to buy it. This particular location is very well situated on the edge of a very robust market, right? So, there's a number of folks out there that are interested in power coming from this particular area. So, again, that's something that we've checked the box on and that we're very comfortable that we can sell the power from this general project. And then, quite frankly, another piece is that it has a low impact to...a low environmental impact to wildlife. We do a number of environmental studies well before we get to the project, before we decide we're going to build a project. That includes mapping bad hybernacula, bad hibernation routes, a number of wetland delineation surveys. I could probably bore you with a fairly extensive list of environmental things. But suffice it to say that we have run a number of the environmental...you know, the environmental looks in this general area. And again, we've kind of checked that off, that we're happy with the area from this perspective. So, again, you know, those five kind of key components are all really kind of coming together in this general area that make this...makes this a good area to build a project like this. So, again, we're pushing forward with that. What we're proposing at this point is a 150-megawatt site, okay? We anticipate that that's going to be anywhere from 75 to 77 turbines throughout the project area, 43 of which right now are slated for Fayette County. Okay, so roughly 60% of the project area would be located in Fayette County. The expected investment on that size of a project is about $250 million. Again, just six...roughly 60...excuse me, 60%, so about $141 million being directly invested within Fayette County. We also estimate a general local tax base influx of about $35 million over the entirety of the project. Again, roughly $20 million for Fayette County. One of the other key components that this brings in is, you know, not just tax revenue, but it brings in what I will call disposable income to landowners that sign up to host a turbine or infrastructure on their property. Right now, our estimates are that that would be about $15 million that we would pay out to individual landowners to host turbines or infrastructure on their properties. So, again, a nice influx. And then, there's the other piece. Because Fayette County is the predominant seat of the project, we will be building, as part of the project, the O and M, the operations and maintenance facilities within Fayette County. We'll be creating anywhere from five to 10 local full-time permanent jobs. Again, those will be located in Fayette County. And then, during the construction phase, roughly 200 to 250 construction jobs that will be created throughout the construction of the process. Again, with that, even that temporary influx, what you see is, you know, an immense amount of activity in the area. But that activity also brings economic development in and of itself, okay? That I have not quantified as part of this. And that comes from people staying in hotels, to people eating locally, to people buying gas, to people buying, you know, clothing, all kinds of situations like that. One of the things that I'm proud of from, you know, working with NextEra is that, you know, like I said, we own and operate. We stay within these local communities, right? We develop these relationships locally, and we do as much as we can locally. So, you know, our mandate to our operations and maintenance folks who are going to be on the ground are, you know, if you can sign a fuel contract local...with a local company, that's what we should be doing. If you can sign a landscaping agreement with a local company, that's what we need to be doing. So, again, it's...I haven't quantified those within this additional economic impact, but those figures aren't there, all right? You know, like I said, we're in it for the long haul, all right? And that's probably the most important thing that I can say about NextEra. Just a little bit of background on me. I've actually been with the company for 12 years. The majority of folks that...my colleagues, my peers are, if not in my average timeframe, actually been with the company even longer. I have actually...throughout my career, I've negotiated labor contracts, which is not relevant to this one. But I've also, for the last six years, prior to taking this particular role, I've managed the actual operational assets. So, once they go through the development phase, then we pass them over to another group that we have in-house that manages all the contracts that, you know, I'm here signing with you folks, or I'm here signing with the local individuals, right? We pass those to a business management group in-house that takes care of those projects. We turn them over, right? So, they know what we've promised, what we've agreed to, right? So, that's another piece, I think, that we bring to the table. Not only, you know, we're completely vertically integrated, or we do our own operations and maintenance, we don't contract that out. We have the business management folks, they're going to be managing the contracts after the project's long gone. And then, you know, we do as much as we can locally to make sure that, you know, we're a part of the community. That's our intent, right? So, with that, you know, open up to any questions that you may have that I can answer for you, or...
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
If the project fell into place, what's the timeframe? How quickly can you get started, and what time would it take to install 75, 77?
Thank you for bringing that up. I should have covered that one. So, the construction process is about a six-month process. These things go up relatively quickly. As far as...we are primed, ready to construct in start of 2016, okay? The only thing that will prohibit that at this point is finding that off-taker to purchase the power, right? So, you know, I'm actually actively out there marketing this project, as well as some others in my portfolio. But I'm actively, you know, marketing this project. I was actually...I just drove in literally from another area today where I talked about this particular project, so someone can sign, and see if we can get a long-term contract, a power purchase agreement on this particular project. So, if everything goes according to plan and the way we would like to see it, you know, I'd probably say that you'd see construction activity beginning in the June to July 2016 timeframe, with an end completion date of December 2016, right? There are...just a caution, I don't want to make a promise that that's the date. There are a number of factors that have to line up to make that happen. But that's what we're certainly working towards at this point. Any other questions I can answer, or...
If not, what we need to do then as a council tonight is either accept or reject a preliminary agreement that we've had, that we've had the executive session out, we've gone over the details of it. Again, this is preliminary. We need to have a public hearing on the tax abatement portion of this yet. We'll advertise for that, we'll have that, we'll listen to public discussion, and we'll have a final vote on this. We're thinking about the 20th, if we can get...if that meets the criteria for advertisement.
And have a final? You need to...you really need to...if you talk to Diana Wright about it, because she's the one that's been doing all of the tax abatement. The reason I say that is you typically have to have a preliminary, which you don't have to have a public hearing for. You have to have a preliminary resolution signed, typically at a meeting. And then, you set the date for the public hearing at that. And I think it's a 10-day advertising period. And that's 10 days for publication of paper.
Yep.
So, you would have to have that. Plus, you'd also have to have...I don't know how you're going to do the ERA designations, you know? I mean, has...the areas have to be...
What's in the map attached to the resolution?
It's already been done.
I'm sorry, I'm going to introduce myself, everybody.
Not if you haven't had a resolution on it. We haven't had a...unless you have a signed resolution.
Well, that's what... That's what I presented this...just so everybody knows, I'm Mary Soliday. I'm an attorney from Indianapolis, and I've worked with Jeremy on a couple of different projects. And thank you, first of all, for your hospitality, the vote tonight, and a couple of other tasks we've met. Happy to chat with you offline. I've got your Debbie, right? Yeah. I've got...already have a notice prepared, I just didn't know what date to put in, the notice of the tax...
So, your preliminary included the ERA designation?
Yeah, correct.
Which it's done. I mean, I used to do that for you.
I knew you had a lot of experience there.
Yeah, you can do that. And it also sets the date of the public hearing in the preliminary resolution.
Yeah, correct. Yep. And so, assuming we can get published in the paper Sunday, or even Monday, we'll be...
There's no paper on Monday.
On Monday. So, we need to get it done on Sunday or Tuesday?
Yes.
We get it done Tuesday, that's still enough time. So, we can submit it tomorrow. I was going to send to Christopher the draft notice, I was going to copy you. I'm going to ask you to write down your email address for me. And then, that way, I can get an email out in the morning to everybody and get the notice approved, and then we can get it placed.
So, what we need to do is, you know, somebody's going to make a motion on this. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote and get this thing rolling. Is there any discussion on this?
This on the preliminary resolution?
Correct.
And that's November 20th, this event?
Six o'clock?
Correct. Yeah.
Mike, I'll make a motion to accept it.
We have a motion to accept. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion to accept to approve the preliminary agreement between NextEra and Fayette County. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I will need to refrain from participating in the vote because of an interest that I have with the potential agreement.
Thank you. Thank you for your honesty, appreciate that. So, Councilwoman Wise is abstaining from this vote due to conflicts of interest? We're ready to vote.
Councilman Winter?
Yes.
Councilman Strong?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Seidel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wise?
Abstaining.
Councilman Blunt?
Yes.
Councilman Nardi?
Yes.
Motion carries with a vote of six to six, with one abstention. Jeremy, I want to thank you and NextEra for bringing this to our county. We desperately need it, of course, and it'll help us out quite a bit. We're looking forward to working with you in the future and developing this project.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Transfers. First time we have for the transfers is a prosecutor. She's requested a $500 transfer to cover perp expenses through the end of 2014. We got a number of...we got the...
We got four.
Four or five of them. If we wanted to just handle them all at one time.
Yeah, maybe we should.
I'll make a motion, Mike.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the transfer request for the prosecutor's office. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We got a second. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Aye, ahsa, but motion carries. I don't have these in front of me. The additional appropriation. Okay, thank you. The Judge Butch called me on these. These are for the circuit court for...she's requesting $6,000 to be transferred to...the appropriated indigent transfer. Notice this?
Transcripts.
Transcripts.
It's an additional, not a transfer. You'd be adding more by the end of the budget.
And then, one for pauper attorney, those indigent is for $6,000, and the pauper attorney is for $25,000. We have a motion to approve the additional appropriation?
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Aye, ahsa, but motion carries. Next, we'll hear from our coroner. And I just want to preface her before she comes to the podium that any questions you have over coroner, they strictly deal with her additional appropriation and nothing else.
I've just given a brief synopsis of an unfortunate duty I have returning and requesting more funds for pathologist autopsies, lab tests, and transportation. Unfortunately, our community is seeing an increase in fairly young people passing away, and we have to determine the cause of their death. So, I am requesting the following funds. As I've mentioned there in the synopsis, that since we last spoke on September 2nd, there have been six autopsies needed. That's not counting the one yesterday, which is a new one, it's number seven, just since September 2nd. Four of which were persons 32 years old and younger, two in their 20s and two in their 30s. So, we're seeing a loss of our young people, basically. And therefore, with pathologists and autopsies, I'm requesting...do I do these one at a time? First one, they all tie together, but $7,000, which will cover the full autopsies. Transportation costs parallel the number of autopsies. They have to be transported to a facility to have autopsy. For that, I'm requesting an additional $1,000 to cover those for this year. And I'm requesting additional autopsy lab toxicology, $360. Those are for lab tests that are obtained on those who need...we need more information, but yet we don't need a full autopsy, so that's what I'm requesting.
Mike, I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to approve, Ms. Lynn?
I'll second the motion.
A motion to approve and second. Any further discussion?
It's another reason why we need to stop the terrible abuse of drugs in this community.
Well, I just want to, I, I'm in no way saying what the causes of death are in these situations, I cannot, that has not been determined.
Understood.
But, the young, the nature of the age of the folks lends quite a concern to our community at this time.
I think the state police post is being open, and they got a task force going on over there, I think you, I see about 20 cars over there a day, I think they're working on the problem, I hope they are.
I am truly thankful that I, that the number of problems that there have been with drugs in our community, that I have not had the number that I could have, let me put it that way.
Yeah.
Because it would be quite substantial for our community.
We have a motion to approve, and we have seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional reduction, county general, auditor, and clerk.
This is, when Beth Richardson left in my office, she had been here less years than Terry Cabbins, who took her place, and this is just to take, and, so then when Terry moved into the auditor's office, that left a vacancy, and they started a new employee who made less money than Terry, so, it ended up being, we needed $495 extra in the auditor's budget to pay Terry Cabbins through the end of the year, so we transferred it out of the line that she moved from, so, it's just swapping money from one department to the other.
Yeah.
I'll make a vote.
We have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve in second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. Health vaccines. $14,000?
$14,000. And I've been there.
She says...
If you want to read what they've said.
Mike, I'll make the motion on the vaccine.
Do you want to hear what it is?
Yeah, I've talked to Terry about it.
Finish year pain for the flu, pneumonia, and private vaccines from 114 to 1015 of 14, 2014. We have received approximately $14,031 from the sale of vaccines. Also, this year, we had to purchase vaccine for children whose insurance claims for vaccine over and above the... I don't know, I can't read what she says, of two different flu vaccines, $8,276 more than budgeted. Okay, so Russ, you have a motion? Second?
Second.
A motion to approve, second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. 144s?
I think Richard is here, but I will, I'll speak to this for him. The administrative assistant in the highway department is retiring January 2nd, and she, plus, she is off on FMLA right now, so, it doesn't look that she'll, if she does, if she comes back this year, it won't be until probably December, and there's just a lot of, a lot of things that have been, she's been off since October 15th. So, the commissioners interviewed, they interviewed 14 applicants, they narrowed it down to two, one of those applicants went through because would have had a substantial decrease in pay from her current job, and they have approved the hiring of Angie Copeland, who is with us tonight, sitting in the background waiting, and would like to get Angie started on next Monday, she's giving, she's worked in the school corporation, and she's giving notice there. So, I calculated, this is the starting pay for the starting ordinance for this job, what we have left in Kim's line item, I have calculated, if Kim came, came back and worked the whole month of December, which would be great, because then she could be working and training Terry's son, then we would still have enough money to pay Angie and to pay Kim. Did I say Terry, did I call you Terry, I'm so sorry, Angie. So, you will in essence, it would in essence have kind of two people in the job, but really the jobs, the job's been sitting there, and we have it, we're not paying out of it right now, so...
Do we have a job description of that, that position?
Yes, we do, I don't have it with me.
Is this administrator, is it gonna be like it was before?
Derek.
Fills in when, when Richard's not there?
I, I have no, that, I don't believe it.
Do you know, Richard?
Is Richard here?
Is Richard here?
No, he isn't here.
Beeler?
I think, I think as far as, I don't know, I think as far as the filling in, I, I don't know, I don't know what, to what extent that was, and, no, I don't think that they think that Angie's gonna go down there and go with Richard. Angie's gonna go down there and do the bookwork, so we can calculate, there's an annual report that's required to be filed with the state, that breaks down the cost per road, and I'm sure man hour cost, and materials cost, and those kind of things are calculated in a special program they have down there, plus, gets all of the, gets all of the claims for materials and all that come in and file them with our office, balance their records to our records, keeps tracks of the employees' hours that they work, right now for the last couple payrolls, Richard's been bringing the timesheets up, and Kathy's been making out the claim voucher, and then Richard's been signing it from that, so...
So, Angie, you would be a full-time, 40-hour work person, right?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So, you'd be entitled to all the benefits and everything, okay. I'll move to approve the 144s requested by the highway department.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, and we have seconded, to approve the 144 for the highway department. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. Next time, tell Richard he has to be here with you. He's sitting right next to you. Amendment to salary ordinance.
Um, that, part of that is from our last, last meeting where the registrar slash office manager in the health department, that salary had to be reduced, because Terry Cawker retired, hired someone new, and we need to make the salary ordinance amendment to fix that. The other is for what you've just passed tonight, so, those will need to be, and then that, that will be advertised.
Questions, concerns? Motion?
I think we all, we all knew this had to be done. I'll move to approve ordinance number 2014-10 for the health department.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2014-10, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. Last time of my business, patron concerns?
Yes, I'm making a motion that before we close out our meetings, we sign all the paperwork prior to actually closing the meeting, because we have to sign, the Debbie passes around.
I'll second it. What's the purpose?
Uh, because it should be, it should be done within the meeting for...
The motion was, we...
I mean, the motion pass, has already passed, once it's passed and seconded at the meeting.
We didn't go down there.
I'm saying, it's all right.
Oh.
You can close the meeting without signing, but I guess that's...
I don't understand the logic behind it, but...
The logic behind it is, after the meeting, we stand around here, and we start talking about things, paper, and it sets bad influence, and it should be done ahead of time, we can never be accused of a court.
Well, we've signed papers incorrectly while, even afterwards, I mean, you voted no on the budget, you signed affirmative on the budget.
At some point, I just, I made the motion, and I just want to bring it to the...
I'm, I'm, it's fine, okay. Any further discussion?
I, I got no problem with, with Mark's request, it's just gonna cause Justin back there to have to stay, operate the cameras longer, maybe, maybe he'll get paid a little extra for his, his time.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Aye is that, a motion carries. Patron concerns? Could you please introduce yourself, young man?
I'm Paul Henry, I've been here before.
Right.
And I got some questions to ask, not only for me, but what I hear on the street, and you can laugh at this if you want to, but when you're in the barber shop, you hear a lot of service, and I wasn't gonna come, but yesterday I heard some people got ahold of me, and just through general conversation, said, "You need to go." So, first of all, I got some questions. Oh, one other thing, I think it's a real honor to be on the county council and to be a commissioner, and generally, I think you all do a good job. One of the concerns I have is, and other people have, is that this job pays $4,800 a year. Correct me on this, if anything I say is wrong.
You're correct.
And generally, you have a meeting a month?
Some of us, yeah.
Take pardon?
Some of us, yes, some of us more.
Yeah, okay, so that's $400 a meeting, 12 meetings, plus, if you wanted, it's available to you, health insurance, which costs, for you or your family, it costs you 12, 13,000 dollars a year at the county, right?
Approximately.
Now, it's also, if you're old enough to draw social security, and you can get on Medicare, they got a supplement that you can get on, it's not full insurance, that saves the county $8,000 a year. Am I right about that?
None.
Okay. My biggest concern is, is missing meetings. And Russell, this is directed to you, and I'm the one that got ahold of the public chairman, and asked him what your intent was about being on the county council, since you're out of town and, and missed meetings.
I don't miss very many meetings.
Well, I know you missed Two Street.
Go to the book, look, Paul.
You missed Two Street. You missed Two Street, I know.
Monthly meetings?
Yeah.
No.
So, you don't feel bad about missing a meeting and still...
Well, I feel bad about it, but I tell you, well, my family's no family before the meeting. I only missed one meeting, monthly meeting, Paul, check the books.
So, you still got paid for it, ain't you?
Oh, actually, I'm, yeah, I got paid for it.
So, you have no concerns about that?
I've really never thought much about it, no, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, the other thing I'm upset about, and people are upset about, is that, okay, county highway garage, I know you don't want to hear this, but you're gonna hear it anyway. For $575,000, you could have bought Lake Intervent, spent $3,500 for two upgrades, and Jim Wolf and Mark from get a flyer together, and go around the neighborhood over there, and work everybody up, and the next commissioners' meeting, they couldn't get all, all the people in the room, there's too many over there concerned. Now, okay, we're down there, and we're gonna spend, if the way I understand it right, we already blew $30,000 before you decided you wasn't gonna give the commissioners, but $600,000 to build a building, and the only thing they can build down there is offices and a shop. Now, all the county highway trucks are gonna sit outside, and them boys are gonna go in when there's a foot of snow, and you expect them to clean the trucks off, and get out here and clean the roads off, so we can have school, people can get to work, and the farmers can get around and take their livestock. Now, explain to me why we didn't go ahead and buy Lake Intervent, you had a building over there, that was a state yard building, 50-ton crane in there, offices, bathrooms, surveillance cameras, everything, and we didn't buy it. Now, Jim Wolf?
I'll explain it to him.
You have to talk loud, because I can't hear.
Okay, I'll talk loud. Uh, I brought up East Connersville, Fiant Street there is narrow street, there's kids that live over in that area, that diesel trucks been going up and down the road, it would be dangerous. Also, there's a train over there, and that train blocks off Fiant Street, block times two weeks, three hours, and that one day we went, well, the day of the meeting that we voted on, it had the road blocked for six hours. Now, I don't think it's a very good place to put the highway garage, if you go be blocked off from leaving there, and if that train is blocking Fiant Street, well, the other time it's blocked it one up the track, where they, the highway garage couldn't get out either. And what I don't understand is, we was offered the highway garage for $575,000, they ended up selling it for $400,000. So, they, they was asking us $175,000 more, I got the papers from the recorder's office, I got a copy of it at home, if you want a copy of it, but they asked the county $175,000 more than what was sold for. And also, our gravel and sand is out there on State Road 1, and if we need gravel and sand, we would have to send a truck down State Road 1, load her up, take her back, about each trip probably being about two gallons of diesel fuel. You figure that out for over 20 years, that's gonna be a lot of money. I did put the highway garage down one to begin with, causing the sand and gravel, it's right across the street, it's money saved.
Well, you know what, I farm in Waterloo Township, and I got another place down on Alquon Road, and I drive a school bus, and I'm 75 years old, and for years, whenever the blocking, the crossings blocked, you turn around and you go to the next crossing, and you go to the next one, so that's no excuse.
We shouldn't have that problem, we shouldn't put a building for the county in place for where we're gonna have problems. We don't have any problems down on State Road 1, the gravel and stuff's right across the road, we need gravel, we go over and get it. State Road 1, 21 down there is not blocked. Fiant Street, and it's blocked, you don't know when it's gonna be blocked or not. One day the train was down, they had to get a guy from northern part of Indiana, just to press the circuit breaker.
Well, I understand that you told Barker that he could have the money to buy that building. building, and then the next day, you guys go out with them flyers.
Well, I got thinking about it. We didn't tell anybody. He said, we gave him permission and tell me to go check into it. We didn't say we'd give him the money.
Yeah.
Barton always stretches it a little bit more. Every time Bart brings something up, he stretches it a little bit out.
I don't think everybody feels that way. And I was told today, that last night, after the election was over with, and the Republicans were down there celebrating, that a couple of the council members apologized to Barton about the way he'd been treated by the county council.
Well, I don't know anything about that, I'm not getting any personalities on that.
Well, I can, I can change that the other way. He should apologize the way he's treated this council also.
Right.
I'm, I'm...
I didn't hear what you said.
He should apologize the way he's treated this council at times also.
Mr. Henry, I was at that meeting last night, and I apologized to Mr. Barker for the way he was treated. I'm sorry. This council hasn't treated him the best. Any elected official that comes in here shouldn't be treated the way they're treated at times. So, I apologize for the way that he was treated, because I didn't feel that it was fair. I don't care if we like him or not, you know, you can have your differences and stuff, but you still got to treat him like a human being, and I don't think it was right. And there's differences in the way that meeting occurred. Now, I was one of the ones that was in favor of the garage at Fuzzy Lakes' location. They do bring up some valid points, I understand that. My biggest concern was we only sampled probably less than 1% of the county to get their opinion about where the garage should be. Now, when I was out campaigning, I got a lot of feedback and everything from everybody, except for one person, that wanted us to buy Fuzzy Lakes' building. So, it's water over the dam at this point.
I know it is, and me here tonight...
And it doesn't matter, we sold it for $400,000 or $575,000, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's, it's, it's a done deal.
Oh, I know, and I'm here tonight, and it's not going to make any difference, what I say. But I got to get it off my mind. And the people, the people I talked to today said, "Hey, you got to go." You know what? The last time I was here, I wanted you to spend another $180,000 and build down there what we wanted to build, what they wanted to build. And I went out of here so disgusted, because before this meeting ever took place, it was already decided. Now, I don't even know why you had a meeting. Why didn't the foreview walk in here and say, "We're not going to give you any more money adjourned?" Because that's what it looked like to me. You talk about violating the open door meeting? The foreview didn't have a meeting?
We did not have a meeting, I guarantee.
You never talked on the telephone or nothing?
We did have no meeting.
Oh.
Not in a quorum.
Not in a quorum.
We never did.
Never did.
Never did.
I, I voted against it, because that's what people in my areas telling me, there's no reason to spend that kind of money.
If you, if you expect the general public to believe that...
We offered $300,000 for them to build a garage. That wasn't good enough, they came back. We gave them $600,000. You tell me, if you only got $600,000 in your pocket, and you're going to get a building, you're going to go out and buy an $800,000 building? That don't make no sense. Somebody's not listening.
Well, I, I don't know anything about it particularly.
Yes, you do.
Except that building down there, that they're going to have now, all their equipment's going to sit, "Mark, I've been to your house, wait a minute, I've been to your house in the wintertime."
Gentlemen, let's lower the tone, please. Just talk a lot.
Okay. I, that building right now presently has never been condemned. You read the engineer report, he did not condemn it, and he did not say to move out of that building. So, they can still park the equipment in there in the winter. Don't, don't work in the, in the building, but park your equipment in there and go and work on your equipment over in the, the new building, once they get it built. But they can still park their equipment in there to get it out of the weather, because it's never been condemned. That building was sitting on jacks down there, and I got pictures of it, and, and they came, at that time, the superintendent down there came to the council, asked for money just to buy some posts to get that building off jacks, and Barton was on council, and they refused to give him that money. So, they had to go out and get telephone posts to replace those posts, get that building on jacks. And then one of those posts right now is, was hit, is busted, and has been plated together. And so, and all these years, why didn't, why wasn't anybody concerned about that building being on jacks, and they work in it day after day, like it's okay? So, why all of a sudden now is a big, a big concern? And it was never condemned by that engineer. I got the report and I can show it to you. So, that's where we're at.
Well, I think it's changed. You know, I've been to your, your farm?
Yes.
In the wintertime, loaded truck, you know? Cold, snow on the ground. Now, your equipment's sitting outside.
That's right. That's correct.
Yeah. And then here is the taxpayers' equipment going to sit outside.
I'm saying they can still use that building. That building was never condemned by anybody, by the engineer.
We, with the report that was given, Mark, you know it, basically, they don't come out and say it's condemned. But it's highly recommended we don't use that building. If we...
No, they did not say that.
Yes, they did.
They did not say that.
You better read it again, because in that report it says...
No, they did not, Mike.
If we are subjecting ourselves to a liability issue, and I think that's a big mistake, but...
But anyway.
Doesn't matter.
No matter what, Paul, I appreciate you coming, and more people should come like you do and voice their opinion. Everybody just sits back at home and they don't, they don't come, they complain, but they don't come, and I'm glad you came.
Well, I'm here to complain.
Well, and I'm glad you did, because I'm glad, I, I want to hear that. I want people to come forward, but a lot of people don't. They want to complain in the public, you know, out, like, you know, in the public, but they...
I agree with you, I understand. I don't know why more people didn't come today tonight.
Paul, I'd like to also make a comment. I was with Mike at the, um...
I can't hear.
I'll speak louder. I'll speak louder, okay? I was also with Mike at, after the election, and made the comment to Barton that I was, I was sorry that we could not have gotten the highway garage accomplished. I, I feel very strongly that we're in limbo, and that, that building should have been corrected, we should have moved on long ago. And I felt, you know, like for whatever failure on my part, to be able to come to an agreement that would have meant building the garage in its location as they asked. So, again, I did make that apology, because I do feel that it was a, a problem with, perhaps, when I was president of the council. But I strongly feel that every one of us need to vote the way we believe, and right or wrong how we felt, we all voted the way we felt our constituents voted. I mean, I voted against being over there in spite of the savings. But again, there were other costs, so you just have to weigh all of the decisions, or you know, weigh all the pros and the cons, and then vote the way you believe, and like you. I, I applaud you coming, and we should hear more. And I do hear, and I try to act and respond. So, I did say that, and I am still sorry. It's, I feel like we're as big a boondoggle sometimes here as they are in Washington, and I think that's unfortunate, because we don't move on. There are other problems that we could be dealing with.
I know that, but I'm, you know, I'm just disgusted about it, and, and there's one way just to get it off your mind.
Yeah.
And that's come in here and, and you know, Jim, if you threw out all your reasons in the paper, that you still wanted the county highway garage down there, maybe the people would understand.
I, I told them down here. The newspaper was in here.
I read every article in the paper about county...
Well, though I'm saying, down here at the meeting, I brought up the same argument.
Yes, you did.
I brought up the same argument.
Your concerns are a concern, you know?
Well, in Jim's defense, the paper doesn't capture everything that's reported here or accurately.
That's true.
Well, thanks for your talk.
We appreciate you coming in.
Hey, come down, Eddie. Come down.
I'm sure, I'm sure you hate to see me jump through the door.
No, no, I don't hate to see it.
Hey, if you want to come and see me up the store, you're welcome to. People come in all the time to talk about stuff, so you're welcome.
Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I'm going to hang around till the meeting's over with and it's adjourned, to make sure that you don't all talk to each other.
I love that, love that.
Thank you, because we need to watch dog.
We need to watch dog.
There you go.
Might argue.
Okay. Do any other items to be brought up for the council?
I have, I have one question I'd like to clarify, Mr. President.
Yes.
Did we, have we actually said, are we going to advertise for a special meeting for November 20?
Yes, I believe so.
We did?
You do it by way of that public hearing notice, that's published in the paper, that's the notification you need.
Okay, so November 20.
Six p.m.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. I have nothing else.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to kind of hang around.
I'll be short. I'm Dave Caldwell, I'm the Soil and Water Conservation Board.
I'm Tophacordium.
Okay.
Okay, so I can hear you.
I'm Dave Caldwell, I'm the Soil and Water Conservation Board, and on behalf of the board, I just wanted to thank the council for granting our budget request. That'll give us, that'll help support some programs we've got started that I think are real good for the county and the taxpayers in the county, and I appreciate you doing that. Deb, I asked Deb to do a little number crunching the other day about where our tax money comes from, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we figured out that 33% of our tax money comes from agriculture in this county.
What percent? I'm sorry?
33%.
Thank you.
And to, as I understand it, that's of all the entities and categories that we classify tax income into, that's the largest. Is that also correct? I think that's what we figured out.
Yeah. I, I did it by, by property description class, property class.
So, I, I'm sorry, Dan's not here, I wanted to assure him and you folks that we're not going to take that 33% to China or Michigan or anywhere, we're going to leave it right here, and of course, obviously, it's not portable, but it, you know, can't, we can't change the amount of land we got, but we can make it more productive. And the things that you're helping us support, support us do will help us do that. So, once again, I thank you very much for helping us out, and I'll invite you all to the things we're doing, so you can see the money that you're allocating to us and being spent wisely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to keep hanging around.
I would like to bring one more item up. I'm, I'm sorry, and there didn't seem to be an appropriate place to do that earlier. I attended the community corrections meeting, their quarterly meeting, and they, there has been discussion in the past, and we took a look at, the wage and salary committee took a look at their problems they were having with keeping up employees, and I think there was an adjustment made. The statutes in the state talk about the Board of Directors for the Community Correction being the ones that set the salary ordinance for the community corrections. So, of course, the, the revenue or their income to operate comes from a grant. So, that is something that they are wanting to bring to the attention, and I felt, I made the comment during the meeting, that I thought that that would be something that should be turned over to the Wage and Salary Committee, and that, that was something that, you know, they might want to get a heads up before a formal request would be made. So, I asked Russ to, you know, maybe once a set up, I can provide the information, and if you want to schedule the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. It'll be awesome, it's fine. Hang out, say kumbaya. Or do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
One, one time. We have a second. Motion to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Nay.